...meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, L.S. clerk, please call the board.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Rippey.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item four tonight is the approval of the minutes of the special committee of the little meeting from January 2nd, the minutes of the regular board meeting from January 2nd, and the minutes of the special meeting of the board on January 29th. Are there edits, questions for the clerks on the minutes? Okay. Chair would like a motion to approve the minutes with the understanding that the record will remain open for additional five calendar days for revisions as trustees seem to be being offered. May I have that motion? By trustee Schaller, seconded by trustee Thompson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item five tonight, I'll start off with, it is a genuine delight to welcome my neighbor and my friend, Susie Perkins, as a new member of the Board of Trustees of the Village. She and her husband Dave and their daughter Lily are with us here tonight, and this is to fill the vacancy caused by trustee, former trustee Dalton Lang's decision to become Village Administrator, and in this case, we've got a great deal in both instances. I'd like to recognize Susie for a moment to talk a little bit about herself and her family, and why they chose to make Lake Barrington their own, and then Chair will ask for a motion.
Thank you. My name is Susie Perkins. I moved to Lake Barrington about four years ago, a little before four years ago, with my husband Dave and my daughter Lily. We have thoroughly enjoyed our time here, and I really look forward to keeping Lake Barrington beautiful, the community that we moved here to.
And home originally?
Home originally is from the Des Moines, Iowa area.
Now, you can keep busy with other activities in the community as I recall. I think folks would be interested in that.
I do. Well, I'm very active at my daughter's school. She goes to countryside, and I'm a room mom there. I spend a lot of time there, and we are the leader for the Girl Scouts, work with children in the Girl Scouts.
So we have a cookie connection, that's what I'm trying to say.
We do, right.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, Lily, if you don't make your vote, it would just misboard your, your, your voting on you. The room mom experience will help you a lot in this assignment.
It's a, it's a joy being there, it really is.
Well, we're delighted you're with us.
Thank you very much.
Dave, there may be occasion personally for this, so I'm glad we can be friends at least for tonight. Thank you. Chair would like a motion to revise consent to the village president's appointment of Susie Perkins as a village trustee for a term expiring on April 30, 2021. May I have the motion, please?
So moved.
By trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Thompson. Let the record show that trustee Burke was not here, but supports the nomination. I'll ask for the, please call the board.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes. We congratulate you. At the podium, we'll take the oath of office.
Okay.
And I'll give you this one. You got it, okay, terrific. Let's face this way so that the folks at home can also visit with us on this, because after tonight, you may not have as many friends at home, so it's a good time to watch. If you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Susie Perkins.
I, Susie Perkins.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of village trustee.
To the office of village trustee.
In the village of Lake Barrington.
In the village of Lake Barrington.
In the county of Lake Aforesed.
In the county of Lake Aforesed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
My congratulations.
Thank you.
You and I will sign these after the meeting.
Okay.
Okey-dokey. I'd like to move to agenda item 14A, Resolutions. It is a delight to see the audience, our friend Art Rice, former trustee in Cuba Township. He is here at the event, and he has questions, but this concerns PACE and our annual relationship there for the local share agreement for a handicapped and senior bus service. I'll ask the administrator to set up the issue, please, for the board.
Sure. Every year, we've been participating with the Barrington and Cuba Township to ride Dial Ride Bus Service to our seniors and residents with disabilities. Baycoa kind of helps facilitate this intergovernmental agreement, and they keep track of a lot of the data. So Baycoa also requested they welcome a trustee from Lake Barrington to participate in their transportation committee if we have anybody who's still able to serve in that. So this, this service really helps some of our residents who are quite predominantly isolated. They can't get out, they can't get, we don't have regular bus service, so the Dial Ride service fills this, and some of them with disabilities, there's lifts available so they can get transportation to wherever they need, they need to go, whether it's a doctor's appointment, or, you know, to visit friends who they are not isolated, or get to their jobs if the service is available. This donation of $4,597 would be sent after our May 1st, which is next fiscal year, because we paid them last year for this kind of movement that we're in, so we're just a little bit ahead of the game here.
Are there questions for the administrator? All right. They're being done. Chair would like a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-R-11. Thank you. An intergovernmental agreement between Barrington Township, Cuba Township, and the village of Lake Barrington to provide $4,597 contribution under the local share agreement with PACE for senior and senior passengers. May I have that motion?
So moved.
By trustee Schaller, thank you, Matt. Please have a second. By trustee Rippey. Thank you, gentlemen. The clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Thank you. It feels good to hear that trustee Perkins. Agenda item number six is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the village board of non-agenda items. I don't see anybody seeking recognition, and Art, if you'll please report back that we have passed Resolution unanimous.
I definitely did that. Let me say thank you. Yes, I was the trustee of Cuba Township for about 16 years, and worked back then for PACE program, and when I retired, with SDA for PACE program. And to say, did you folks say yes to this? I honestly, Joyce, it was going to be a delight to hear that story. So thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you very much. For all of the residents of LBS use the service quite frequently, and it's a great benefit to them, so we appreciate the fact that you can offer it.
Well, and I wish there might be somebody in this board that would like to join us on the program.
We will certainly take advantage of that opportunity as our own circumstances prevent me citing a bituary if I took on another responsibility. Agenda item number seven is the consent agenda. These are all items that we have visited on previously, and the administrator has briefed us on them. Are there any questions on Agenda Item 7A? A move to approve by unanimous or a commonest vote. All of them. Consent agenda item. Resolution for the village of Lake Barrington reallocating our 2017 volume cap to the village of Buffalo Grove responding to a request of Lake County Parkers. We have done this for years without incident or concern. C, consideration of approval of mode fuel tax resolution, the amount of $270,000, and approval to solicit bids for road improvements in the Savannah subdivision, containing a few funds. D, MPDES, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. MS4, permit requirement proposal. Are there questions on any of Agenda Items 7B through 7D for the administrator?
Mr. President, I'll just say that I had several questions. The village administration answered very quickly, very well. Thank you.
Further questions for the administrator? Okay, then Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 7B through 7D. 7B, motion to approve Resolution 2018-R-2. Thank you. A resolution approving reallocating the 2018 volume cap to the village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois. And that's the 2018 cap. The headline of 2018 says above 2017. It's really 2018, isn't it?
Uh, I don't believe, yes, it is 20.
Okay, that's fine. No, the, the resolution, the resolution 7A, I just wanted to make sure we did the exact numbers. C, motion to approve mode fuel tax resolution, the amount of $270,000, and authorize the administrator to execute the necessary documents to seek bids for the 2018 road maintenance program. And D, motion to approve agreement with Keybold Hamilton Associates Incorporated, and then amount not to exceed $2,005,000. And motion to accept. So moved. By trustee Rippey, my trustee Thompson, seconded. Thank you, both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. I want to thank the administrator for issuing this consent agenda item to us when she started tonight. Agenda item eight is the treasurer's report. I'll call this treasurer's.
Good evening. So before you, we have our financial statements for the, for the eight months ended December 31st, 2018. We are 67% through our fiscal year. So currently, we have assets of $2,286,000. We have current liabilities of $857,000. Our equity is $1,428,000, and that equals, our liabilities plus our equity equals $2, 286,000, equal to our assets, so the balance sheet is balanced. Fiscal year-to-date revenues are $1,776,000. Our total expenses are at $1,598,000, for a net income of $179,000. And as we've done in the past, and trustee Perkins, you're welcome to give your call or come in with me separately if you'd like to go at a little slower pace, or, or ask questions now. I just don't want you to feel like you've done this every time to kind of catch up on this stuff. So what we typically do is we have this bold line below that we pull out what we call extraordinary expenditures, and we come up with a, what we would call regular operations and net income or loss, and try to compare those two. And so you'll see, once we do that, we'll come up with $198,000 in regular net income, or net income from regular operations, compared to last year, $329,000. That's a difference of $131,000. We've talked about this each month, and that's, you know, some engineering, a little bit higher, labels higher, consulting is higher, but important to know those differences, they were budgeted, so nothing as, wasn't budgeted, you know, it's all been expected for this year.
I appreciate it over the years, the treasurer, and the director, and our finance director, putting in the flash report on the bottom, saying about regular operations, because it's the net, and typically, what we've done is, we strive to maintain a certain level of pretendering for the purposes of operations in the event that we have a major business closing that we don't expect another financial challenge like with Bell and E-Mars or the Village, or three of the pest races. And typically, in the years where we're doing good or above that, we repay it primarily on a practical basis through the acceleration of the road program. And I love when it goes north from your own.
Correct.
From 126 to 179.
We're getting there, that's right.
Now it's standing my best efforts, I go there.
I'm an accountant, you're not.
Yeah, no, like, like the one I married.
Right. Okay. So let's look forward to page 11 until we look at our budget to actual, and you'll see about three quarters of the way down on the page 11, where I notice we're at 70% budget to actual, which is good, since we're 67% through our year. Page 12, this takes expenditures are 64% of budget to actual, and so that's right on track as well for being 67% through the fiscal year. I will note that, once again, income taxes lagging, sales taxes lagging, and utility tax are lagging. Sales tax is a four-month process with the state. So the sales that you purchase at the pump on in December will not have income statement until February. So I just want everyone to, you know, be patient, to look for those Speedway sales tax receipts. It's four months, because the first month is the month of the sale, the next month is the month the retailer sends the sales tax to the state, and there's a review month by the, the state, takes them a month to review those returns, and then the next month they send us our money. So it's, it's a four-month lag. So we'll see that, once we have 12 months behind us, it'll be consistent, but right now, we're just waiting for those Speedway, Speedway sales tax returns to get our financial So are there any questions on the general fund, before I move on? Well, actually, I want, I will mention one more thing. We've been in communication with Speedway, and shortly, we should be receiving their sales tax returns, the day file monthly with the state, that was part of our agreement, and that'll give us a real, much better look at what's happening on a, you know, kind of the forecasting basis. I believe it's through February, you get 10 cents off when you use your Speedway card.
Just gas around. But you have to go inside, kid.
You don't do it to phone, no.
Oh. Go, you put it on the, on the.
Your little credit card, yeah. Or you can type in your phone number, if you've got a phone number lid. They make it really easy.
And their sausage biscuits are wonderful.
Okay, let's move to page 13.
Our minds tend to want to make trivial. Those are everything.
Okay, let's see, we have cash available of $23,000. That's our net current assets, that's our net current liabilities. We do have an upcoming MFT proposal to spend that money, so don't get to use of that sitting in the account. There's also a bonus month for your approval, it's a fund of retention on the first episode of Anna that was done last year, I think it's $20,000 bill, it's a fund of retention, that's due to work construction. Any questions on MFT? We can move to water sewer fund, that's on page 17, do your report. We have net current assets of $1,396. Nothing unusual going on this month, I don't really have anything else to mention, and we do obviously need to keep a nice balance in there for aging infrastructure, if repairs are necessary. Page 21, we can look at the open space fund. You'll see the open space operating checking account at $139,000. The bond account is $104,000, that is solely for paying off the bond payments that are due in April, not October. This, I mentioned last month, we're into a very extensive analysis of money spent in the open space fund, to be sure that we weren't spending anything, any funds on maintenance that had been collected by rent. So Debbie and I did a very extensive analysis of forefront bank accounts and assorting, and the bottom line is, with about $8,000 that this general fund does owe the open space fund for maintenance expenditures that the open space fund spent, that we're going to reimburse them for, and then going forward, any maintenance-type expenses will need to come out of general fund, be budgeted in our upcoming budgets, grass cutting, any of that kind of things, if there's other property acquired in the open space fund, we need to consider all those maintenance-type expenses. So it's just like more of a bookkeeping, kind of an accounting thing I wanted to make you aware of. That's pretty much all I have for the, for the actual funds. Are there any questions before I talk about accounts payable? Okay, we reviewed both warrant and B, and they're there for your approval. There are sort of what we'd call a number of unusual type expenses, nothing to be concerned about, but ones you don't see on a regular basis. We have three AHRS and ConDill invoices for the furnaces, about $11,000 in total there for your approval. Those were not budgeted items, I just want to make that clear to the board. The Baycoa first quarter dues were $6,746. We're starting to see the effects of winter, so warrant and B both have Cuba Township salt bills, $4,305,000 and $4,225,000. During Pepper Park path, some path plowing, that's like a wrong sentence, $1,325,000. Oh my gosh, $1,033,250. Newsletter went out, $2,100,000. There's a swap on annual maintenance fee for $2,925,000. And then there's the MFT bill for LoRig, $20,937. And then there's some open space bills for legal appraisal and surveying costs totaling $4,000. So the new ones for the winter, I won't mention those each month, but I thought since those are just coming out for winter, I would draw those to your attention. And that's all I have.
Are there questions for the treasurer? Excellent. Good news, thank you. Next page. And please thank Debbie Vernon, we know that she's.
I will, yeah, she's, I'd like to say behind the scenes, but I have to give her apologies then.
Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 8A through C. A, approve the financial statements as of December 31st, 2017. B, pay bills of the amount of $262,270.59, as listed on the accounts payable warrant A, dated February 13th, 2018. C, pay bills of the amount of $7,474.91, as listed on the accounts payable warrant B, dated February 13th, 2018. May I have a motion to approve and block? So moved. By trustee Mitchell, may I please have a second?
Second.
By trustee Rippey, thank you, both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Aye.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Agenda item nine, this evening is the administrator's report. Administrator Dalton Lang.
Sure. Trustee Schaller, you're reporting the Baycoa Emergency Management Tabletop Exercise, so.
They're longer than that.
A couple weeks ago, Baycoa hosted the Emergency Management Tabletop Exercise, where they brought together people from all of the Baycoa communities, Deer Park, the school districts, Barrington, Woods, LBS executive director was there, the head of the jewel store, and we had an exercise that we worked on in about groups of 10, about what would happen, and it took us through a day of continuing things getting worse. You know, it starts out with maybe a snow and ice storm, and then when do you call off school? When do you do certain things? Oh, and then the electric went out, and then the phone service went out. So how do you communicate? How do you do these things? And it, it really gives, I think, everybody that is in attendance the appreciation for everything that goes on behind the scenes in these kind of situations. Fortunately, I guess for Lake Barrington, we are a small town, and we contract out our, our public works to Cuba Township, our fire to both Wakanda and Barrington area intercept fire protection districts, and our police, the shares departments, and we're really subservient to them. So we'll be here answering phone calls if more residents or something like this happens, but it, it was a great experience. Trustee Schaller, if you'd like to.
No, I think Baycoa has its tabletop exercises periodically, and with the assistance and the coordination of whichever hospital, actually, they kind of set the scenario up, and the general letting organizes the rest of it, but it, it really, when you come right down to what would happen if, and that's kind of what this is all about, what would happen if you did lose all communications? You couldn't use your cellphone, you couldn't use your phone, you couldn't even anything, and then, it's in the middle of winter, kids are in school, what do you do? So it really, while it doesn't solve anything, it sets the, in case something should happen, at least you have some idea of how you should react, and as Karen said, you know, we rely on our contracted services, but still, we need to have an emergency action plan two that we feel comes a little bit, and probably updated, that's something we'll continue to work on, but it's a, it's a great, great opportunity, and this was the largest gathering I think that I can remember establishing, because that room in the public safety building in Barrington was ACT, so we brought participants, so it was a, it was a great opportunity, so.
I was taking the fire chief to come in.
Sure, you can repeat what you're writing.
I was really impressed with the school districts, both 220 and School District 95 were there, and they really have their act together. The Emergency Management coordinator, School District 95, was sitting at our table, I'm sure it was similar for 220, but she had on her phone, of course, it might not work, but making phone calls, but she had on her phone all the school teachers, where they're at, at all times, like, so she could call up, hey, you know, school teacher Smith is teaching algebra now in room 223. She had all the floor plans, all the contact information. It was, it was, they had a whole protocol down for when they call off school, I think it was last Friday because of the stone, and how much time it takes, because they had notifications, they had to push out to parents, you know, to make sure all the kids are picked up, and the busing, because you think about it, in the morning, the buses are going in three different shifts for grade school, junior high, and high school, and then if you have to call off school in the middle of the day, that becomes a different transportation type of logistics, so it was very impressive.
And communicating with parents about where your children are.
Yeah. So I think you can safely say we had a lot of it. Other news, the Chamber had their annual economics summit last week at the Barrington White House. President Richardson was on business travels, and in his absence, I highlighted Lake Barrington's 2017, including the Speedway Cafe opening, the Lake Barrington Motorsports, and our tax levy that has not been raised for four years in a row, among other accomplishments. After that, I drove to Peoria to attend the ILCMA Winter Conference. I attended, attended sessions including managing controversial zoning applications and the role of the village manager. Due to the forecast of snowstorms, I drove back on Thursday evening rather than Monday, or rather than Friday afternoon, and after speaking to a colleague who left on that noon on Friday, he said I made the right decision. Speaking of snow, we were just talking about that, Chicago logged a record, tied nine consecutive days with magical snowfall, totaling over 15 inches in our area. Last Friday, we were hit with over six inches of snow in the early morning hours, our schools closed, and due to safety concerns, I directed staff not to come into the office. Lisa, of course, ignored me, so she and I held down the fort that, that last Friday. So all is good there. And I also say kudos to Cuba Township, they did an excellent job on that storm. I get, I hope you realize this, but I get emails on what's going on with Snow Command with TJ, he sends it out to all the village administrators, and, I mean, he, he's paying attention, so he looked over the snow was coming in and said, hey, we're going to have our crews out at 4:00 a.m. You know, it's going to snow in the night, fine, people aren't driving so much then, but we'll get it for the morning rush hour. And our roads here, because I drove around a little bit, we were good, and our neighbors not so much, and the state roads weren't, weren't as good as they could be. The Flint Creek, Spring Creek Watership Partnership met today, and we gave input on the draft watership plan. The partnership was recipient of the Lake County SMC 2017 Stewardship of the Year Award, and I'm going to pass around this plaque they got with Harry and Lou here. We, we've given some input to that in the past, and they're asked if we would like to be the first to hold that in our office for the next couple of months, and it'll travel around to all the communities that participated. So that was nice. Thank you. The revised comp plan has been delivered by our consultant, and we have a few minor grammar changes, awaiting for a couple other inputs, and I expect to have the final version for consideration at our March meeting. And for our audience, and trustee Perkins, we have a 2003 intergovernmental agreement on the IGA between the village Wakanda and the village of Lake Barrington, Cuba Township, the Sierra Club, and the Prairie Rivers Network, which established new wastewater treatment plant standards for the Wakandas wastewater. plant standards for the Wakanda's wastewater treatment plant. Those wastewater treatment standards that were established by the IGA are far in excess of what the current state standards are and federal requirements, to assure that the operation of Wakanda's wastewater treatment plant reflects some of those vigorous requirements, and that was a concern to the Village of Lake Barrington, because they're part of Lake Barrington and into the Fox River. So, you know, thank you President Richardson for being instrumental in that IGA, but I wanted to let you know that the buildup for this was, I received the 2017 annual report from Wakanda recently, and is required by our IGA, but I notified the Sierra Club about it. And it's always good, and I have to confess, it's a whole bunch of megabytes worth of reports and different things. So I called up their operator and said, can you give me the executive summary on all this? And it's all good, so I was happy to see that. And last but not least, Casey Larson, our Lake Barrington resident and member of the Northern Ski Club, he's competing in ski jumping at the Olympics, and Casey competed in one event last Saturday, the men's normal hillskate skiing, if you can call it any ski jumping, well. Unfortunately, he failed to qualify for the medal round, but he did make history last Thursday, because he became the 100,000th male athlete to compete in the Olympics, according to the International Olympic Committee. They tracked, he happened to be the 16th starter on last Thursday's competition, and ding, 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 all the bells, you know, went off, and he had that lucky number, $100,000. So he's been gaining a lot of national attention because of that. And I'm not sure if Casey's competing in any other of the ski jump events or not, but I can see him coming up.
Yeah.
Anyway, so kudos to Casey.
And I believe Andy Burke is acquainted with his family, and so I would ask that we put together a resolution, much like we did for young Jake McManus when he came home with his silver medal from the Special Olympics, so honor our local Olympians.
Yes, we'll have that for the March meeting.
Questions for the administrator? Thank you for that very good report. Agenda item 10 is the clerk's report.
Village Hall will be closed March 19th, in observance of President's Day, and Village Hall will also be an early voting location again this year, which will start on March 5th through March 17th.
Do we know when open, or when early voting begins?
It starts on the 5th, but it might start, Lake County earlier than that.
Yeah, I think there's something where they're starting early, but it's up in Wakanda, it's not the remote like you have here, you said March 5th, but I think there is one spot you can vote, and I know we got something that said you could vote by mail too, but I don't know if they've sent those ballots out or not.
When that becomes known, send us all an email just letting us know the second one, please put it on the website.
Check.
As a convenience for our residents. Are there questions for the clerk? Okay, then we can move to Agenda Item 11, reports of the standing committees, I'm sorry, branding and communications. I was looking at the blue heron plaque, and it's less about, it goes to branding a little bit. You know, when you, when you really talk about becoming the Mukatalik community, gracious countryside living, that's the sign of it. When we started working on open space with Citizens for Conservation, who's done yeoman's work as a partner and on their own, the blue herons didn't really come to nest here and make here, because there really wasn't the habitat, and the region's commitment to livable open space really has done this. My pride and personal goal is that we get a bald eagle to start nesting here.
There is one.
We do.
One, just...
It's one that we within our village.
It was in the village.
Really? It was in the village, and now it's moved across the river.
It went across the river, because they make their nest right under, or right above, rather, the trail, and then by France.
They're just off the road. Can we give our tax incentive to move into the village?
Yeah.
Housing.
They still sleep up from the trail over there, it's a stroke of property.
Well, that's wonderful, that. Also on branding and communications, trustee Thompson and I had a call earlier this afternoon with Ryan McGlaughlin, our consultant. We've spent quite a bit of time, and everybody here, under Andy's leadership, has worked on the business side of the branding, how we advertise and build our brand in the business community as a location of preference, but the residential side is one that we're just now beginning to do it. No sense in repeating all of the dialogue we got over and over, but as we seek to be that community that's an oasis of gracious countryside living, we decided it was time to get smart about what do the future homeowners here require? And Ryan actually has considerable experience around this. He's done quite a bit of research already online in terms of census data and related matters to give us. Let's find out what's publicly available for free, in terms of what are the buyers that are probable for our price point and so forth, looking for. And I think one of the things that I will count on trustee Perkins to do is, she and her husband and daughter are the archetype in my mind of the family, who want to come to Lake Barrington. Her neighbors and ours, the Passellas or another one, there's plenty, in just our suburbs. It's one of the great joys, when we moved here, Charlotte was on a tricycle, now the kids are growing, and the tricycles go along with the neighbors, and it's wonderful. So we are putting together, and we, I'm holding, I'm providing the dialing number, Jim's doing the work, it sounds fair. And Ryan and his staff are putting together a plan, they think that they need about a month to do the basic research on census data, because it's not only our data, more importantly, it's what neighborhoods in Charlotte or elsewhere are the people who are probable targets. And we'll look forward to doing this, because after we get the message right, then there's a chance to really probe in these folks' minds about what are the best message points, about why us, as opposed to other communities, were thinking about relocating, looking at typical marketing-type focus groups with this. And then Ryan has some interesting ideas he'll be developing and presenting to us for, how do we drive that out? Because I realize that the future homeowners here are not 61-year-old roundy delegates. And so, I want to make sure, Jim and I are talking about this with Ryan today, and we're beginning to be, we're sweating, we'll be into this. 11B, community relations, special events, and veterans of PERS, trustee Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You'll love my voice. First, I want to recognize our village administrator, Karen Dalton-Lang, parting with her presentation at the annual economic summit, at which she sub for President Richardson. She did a terrific job with her presentation, but also, at the end during the Q and A, she was able to provide to the audience our great logo line, "An oasis of gracious countryside living," which was just terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome, and it's now just, I think it's embodying in all of us, and President Richardson has said it so much, it's finally sinking in, so it's easy to say, and it's true, so.
Yes.
I love that word, it's true.
Yes. The Village Hall staff and officials photo grouping on the wall. I continued conversation with the Bridge High School, and they are really working very hard to find a student to paint the logo mural on the wall, along with the photos and the nameplates, which our village court executive assistant is preparing. Farmers market. Angel Softwater has agreed to have the farmers market on their property. Trustee Schaller and I are working on it with him, with them, and also will be talking to trustee Burke about any exigencies and other issues that may pop up. Finally, the veterans of LPS will have a new, a run-through of their July 19 unit Friar Farm on April 10. The event is going to be the Bravehearts Equine Therapy Program for Veterans. It's a wonderful program, and July 19th in the evening, and we're going to be obviously inviting everyone, not only just from the village, but also from the surrounding communities. It's just a wonderful operation, and we're looking forward to doing that at Friar Farm.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That's terrific. Are there questions for trustee Thompson? 11C, trustee Burke is not here this evening. Administrator Donald Lang, anything that you want to add on his behalf for the next one? Okay. 11D, external relations, I've got a couple of items to share. First, I cannot help, I just pulled it off for trustee Perkins' benefit, you won't get this one, but this month we won't, I won't do this to you twice. When we look at the Wakanda MPD ES permit that we worked on, Wakanda originally agreed to only one criteria disinfection. The only EPA required disinfection, phosphorus removal, pre-treatment, and aeration for dissolved oxygen. The agreement we negotiated with them and the Sierra Club and the other environmental organizations was really hinged on something that was unprecedented. We gave the environmental organization the agreement, and Mr. Bailey, if I get this wrong, I'll ask you to correct it, but I remember this pretty clearly, we did something remarkable that showed them that we were serious. We gave them legal standing to sue and enforce the vote, the terms of it with Wakanda. So Jack Darren and Dr. Cindy Scooprey knew that we were serious, and they were able to negotiate in good faith, and I think at the time, the Wakanda side was equally coming to the table in good faith and had led, so that we included not only the disinfection, the phosphorus removal, the pre-treatment, and the aeration, we also included suspended sample loading limitations, nitrate removal and design, installation, and ongoing operation, wetlands enhancement, monitoring wells installation, monitoring wells ongoing testing, wastewater treatment program, effluent, plant effluent testing, monitoring well testing, and discharge reports provided to the environmental organizations out there. So we got considerably more for that, and I consider it to be one of the highlights of my tenure on this board, this great team effort. Cuba Township, Dave Nelson was all over this with us back in the day there, and my predecessor, our late dear friend Connie Schofield, had my back so that we could negotiate with confidence. A lot of long nights in this, it took about 15 months to get it done, but it's a model for people decide they want to try to get something agree to, they can work at it and do it, it's something that we should continue to be proud of. Two pieces of legislation going on in Springfield that I don't like, we don't like municipalities don't like, and that's, I say that on behalf of all of our associations, the Illinois National League, Northwest Municipal Conference, and BETA. One is an attempt to impose a statewide preemption of home rule authority that prohibits the banning of short-term rentals. We banned, there was a bill in the Senate, and I was on the phone with Don, your lobbyist today about this, for quite some time, he's working to see, run the traps on this, I want to be careful what I say in an open session, but he's all over this, and I have assigned a very sharp priority frame on this. It bothers me when our authority is preempted by the state or by the federal. The second one is the one that we've been inviting all municipalities for quite some time, local government distributor funds, it's municipal share of the state income tax. And there have been runderings of a proposal from the governor's office that a portion of it be not provided back, so they can plug the holes in the state budget. I've called legislators on this, not only our constituent legislators, I mean, Dan McConkey and Nick Sauer and Dave McSweeney are all champions on this stuff, they all get it. And last Saturday, Lake County Municipally gave a legislative breakfast, the administrator Donald Lang, and I attended. I think every one of the state legislators in Lake County said, we don't want to preempt local authority on short-term rentals, they were sensitive to the local government distributor fund. We will see how that plays out, but this is one where I'm, I'm, I'm eager to work on this, just because I feel so strongly about our home rule authority. Also last month, I went to the annual winter meeting of the United States Conference of the Mayors, and as you know, and I say it every time, because I want the public to be confident, I never, I never charge the village for my travel, my hotel, my airline, my car, my meals, my tips, my parking, I never charge the village for anything, because I get a lot out of, I get a lot out of those meetings. Couple of things, we were talking about emergency services before. The mayors along the coasts, Hurricane country, and the ones up on the west coast that are subject to fires as well as to earthquakes, I was telling them about the suburbs, it was coming up on April 10th, they said if anyone learned about emergency management doing some benchmarking on this, we will tell you what we've learned from earthquakes and hurricanes and forest fires. The mayors that took, the building of Los Angeles, Lake Huracan area, were pretty forthcoming on this. Florida mayors, the hurricanes, Emesanta, Lightning Mayor, the hurricane's time, very early forthcoming, and I find this meeting's great. The other thing is, mayors were invited to sign into personal capacity, the US Conference of Mayors letter, the dreamers on top, and I signed it, and it's a problem. So that's how I've been spending my month. Is there any questions that I can answer for anybody on this? Okay, and 11E, finance, HR and administration, trustee Ripley.
Thank you, I have one item, late last month, Karen, Peggy, Debbie, and myself, and you can maybe come to my, I don't know, can you, but, that's it.
I know how tedious that process is, and I appreciate the leadership on it.
No, actually, I give the one to 50,000 G-point. Maybe Debbie is one of the ones that I've thought some personally.
Yeah, it's a kid getting your teeth drilled out, no. Questions for trustee Ripley? Okay, 11F, open spaces in village facilities, trustee Mitchell.
Thank you, just briefly, I continue to get intimately acquainted with our building here, our facility, and had the privilege to spend some time crawling, climbing, going through things, and we're, we're working on lighting, improving, trustee, excuse me, the longer trustee, village manager Donald Lang was able to secure us some samples of LED lighting, which we're testing. In the hallway, you'll notice different brightnesses, and I think probably for the next week, we're going to, her office is going to become the guinea pig for all LED fluorescent, or we're replacing all the fluorescent with LED lighting, and see if we can work with that as an option. So that the idea would be, as we have more bulbs go out, we can convert them over, rather than things that are working fine now, there's no reason to throw them out. That's what, slow transition to the new heating system and air conditioning system, which we've not tried the air conditioning. But I cross-checked every serial number that we, what we ordered, what we bought, what we paid for, and what was installed, all the parts, that's all set up and rolling. And we're going to need to start to budget in, Mr. Ripley, provisions for the remaining heating cooling system right behind us, and you can tell when you hear or you smell that slight, as John said, little cassine.
Yeah.
Oh, the heat exchangers are gone, and those systems in there getting some, it's not as dangerous, then anybody will sometimes set off a smoke detector, which has fun times. So we're moving in that direction, and village administrator and I have got two proposals to look at, to look some more for facility assessment through an architectural firm that was begun actually from GoBaldin, we're still here on an interim basis, to give us an objective idea of what really needs to be done versus, hey, I'd like to change this versus I'd like to fix that or something. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Questions for trustee Mitchell?
Just kudos to trustee Mitchell for getting two signs on Kelsey Road, aiming people going north and south on Kelsey Road as to where the Village of Lake Barrington Hall is.
I've had many people tell me they had no idea there was a Lake Barrington Village Hall, and now both there is one, but that trustee Dalton pushed a little bit with Lake County, because that's Lake County versus Cuba Township, getting road signs up, and that was...
And I didn't have to push, I just asked back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've been pushing that for quite a while, so it's nice to get that.
Yeah, maybe you're very cooperative.
So, have tools, we'll travel. Thank you.
Questions for trustee Mitchell? 11G, public safety, gay communities, trustee Schaller.
If you watch the news this afternoon, it only points to the fact that our law enforcement officers put their lives on the line every day. There was a police commander in Chicago that was shot to death. Of all places, the Thompson Center, doing his job, trying to stop what they believe was someone that needed to be stopped, but it just, it points to me, and I'm a lot of like... was someone that needed to be stopped, but it just, it points to me, and I want to, again, compliment all of the sheriff's deputies and all of the police officers, you get a bad rap every day for the work that they do, when if you were to put yourself in a similar surrounding of someone aiming whatever you think they're aiming at you, and trying to decide whether or not you need to retaliate. In this instance, obviously, the commander had no opportunity to retaliate, he shot him several times, and he died a short time later at the hospital. But it's, somebody pointed out to me that police officers get a bad rap, firefighters are the good guys, because they save lives, and it really, we owe a greater gratitude to both the fire department and the police department for the work that they do, and so I want to thank you for what you do, and I don't know if there's anything that you can report on what's happening in Lake County, and things are under control as long as it doesn't snow?
Thanks, Stuart.
I'm Deputy Bobby Weisaki, I am Robbins relief on average, and on behalf of Sergeant Amber of Lake County Sheriff's Office, we had nothing to report. I don't know if that's good news or bad news, but hopefully it's good, all right.
So, we, we have a great relationship with your department, we're very grateful for the outstanding job we do. Tell us all the stuff that's on your belt.
Jesus, please.
About fifty pounds worth of stuff.
Yeah, they keep adding stuff, like now we got body cams, radio, two magazines, pepper spray, taser, this is a tourniquet, I don't even know who that is, if somebody gets injured, just wrap it around their arm, the label, whatever, stops a blood flow, and then obviously you got your gun and your, the timer, so.
Wow.
And then a couple of something else.
And your Glock, so?
Yeah.
That's a Glock in the car. What's the weapon? What's the weapon, is that in the lock?
Yes, sir. Glock seventeen.
God bless you. We're glad you have them, we hope you never have to use them.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're talking about tabletop exercise and preparing this, I think Administrator Dalton-Lang and myself are going to try to do some FEMA courses in May in preparation for that, I've got to do the one hundred and two hundred DIPS courses, so I'm going to be studying that, most thankful on West, but it's trying to educate ourselves on emergency compost operations and basic operations to obviously put ourselves in a better position, so we'll be doing that in cooperation, the American countryside bar protection industry is kind of setting that up for us, so be doing that, and as was indicated, the tabletop exercise was fantastic, and look forward to the next one. Kudos to whichever hospital, because they really, two gals there put this whole thing together, it's well thought out, I'm still waiting for the reports, because they're going to capture the hospitals and send them out to us, as far as that goes. And as far as the fire departments, obviously, they've been busy with a lot of activities as well, nothing earth-shaking that I'm aware of. As far as gated communities, the enclave is pretty well kind of wrapping up, if you want to reach out to the, the new homeowner association president, and I think we're talking about trying to do some of that with a lot of the associations, but make better contact with that to kind of what in fact we could be doing. Captain Schwann over at Tallgrass said they're in the process of preparing and submitting permits for several quick move-in homes that they will deliver in 2018, so that's a good sign. The traffic was slower of January, that's nothing out of the normal, although it's been surprising, open houses on weekends, there's still a bit of turnout, people out and about, even in all the winter. She said, "We still do have the in-rumors design," went over there, toured it a couple weeks ago, available if anyone in the village wants to move over there and take a look at it, and there they start building ranch houses in Tallgrass, so it's the end of my war.
Thank you. Questions for Trustee Schaller? Awesome. Eleven H, Roads and Infrastructure, tonight, Trustee, Administrator Dalton-Lang will report, we'll ask that Trustee Perkins going forward, chair of this committee, with the support of, with the support of the administrator and our consulting engineers. Susie, I would tell you that if Jim Bayman can make me a municipal land use lawyer, Karen Dalton-Lang can make you a civil engineer, so.
Watercoats downtown.
And don't do dumb stuff, is what he says to me.
So, we talked earlier about the Savannah project that we'll be going forward this year, I will be meeting with IDOT along with our village engineer, John Pury, I think it's next week, I will be meeting with them, because our, our goal is to get all the paperwork into IDOT and have them to approve it, so that we can be on their March twenty-second filing, so the bid openings would be down, and so that would allow the work to start in April, October as well. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the administrator? Agenda item twelve, Little Business, there is none, so we can move to Agenda item thirteen, ordinances, A, consideration of ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a certain contract for the sale of real estate, is this Mr. Bayman or is this Dalton-Lang?
Oh, yeah. Some, some years ago, village signed a, executed an option agreement with Citizens for Conservation, so we agreed to, to sell them portions of the Gibbs property. What we have done is, as we sell a piece of the Gibbs property off to them, we basically were recovering the funds we invested in the property for the, our open space funds or for infrastructure, and, and we also record a declaration of covenants against the property in the form of a conservation reason, so the property can never be developed, so in effect, we're, we're locking the, the property down forever as open space, and CFC is committed to that, and so this follows the same pattern of us selling a piece off of four point one eight acres at the agreed-upon contracted price of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's the same price, that's a average price between arable land and, you know, wetland, and, and that's, so that was the price we originally agreed to, so this will put one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars back in the, out of the closing expenses, either in back into the open space funds, I think that's what we generally do. And happy to answer any questions. One of the unique things about this particular piece of property is that, that it would have, the way it was configured, it would have blocked our access to the, to the remaining portion of the property we own, and as a result, we, we basically designed the property so that there's a corridor at both its east, far extreme west end and its east end, so that the village can access the rest of the village property that's there. And, and finally, they did agree to post a, a sign on the property that will, will say, that will indicate, the bottom part of the sign will indicate in partnership to the village of Lake Barrington.
Thank you for your attention and interest, Trustee Mitchell, I appreciate your diligence.
Absolutely.
You were on the case.
And, well, I think our goal was to have the same size letters and the same font, but, but there was a good reason to have us be, that reference be a little bit smaller so they could get it all on the line, and it's a nice, it's an attractive sign, it's the, the design of it is, is going to be attached to the contract.
That's crazy. Thank you very much, Mr. Bayman. Questions for, for the village attorney and administrator?
Of the remaining sixteen acres, is there anything that they still are interested in or not?
You know, I think if you read between the lines in some of the emails we saw, they might not be, but I think, I, I think I won't break them around to, you know, and by the way, they will be, they will be doing clearing of invasive species such as buckthorn on both our property where the, where the access corridors are and their own, so that it all look like it's basically under one stewardship, consistent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They've been great partners, they've been just great partners. Okay, if there are no further questions for the village attorney, I would like a motion to pass ordinance number two thousand, why does it say nine?
I don't know. Do you know how many times we've been through the?
I know, don't confuse it.
I'm already two thousand and eighteen.
No one's a prophet at their hometown. Two thousand and eighteen dash oh dash four, four, thank you. An ordinance amending, approving, and authorizing the execution of a certain contract for the sale of real estate, my motion, addressed by, executed by Trustee Thompson, thank you, both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey. President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Agenda item fifteen, A, Village Hall Parking Lot Resurfacing, I'll call the administrator to sit down, please.
Sure. You've all used our parking lot, and you've seen the condition it's been, it's, has never been resurfaced since the building was built in nineteen ninety-three, so it's, it's had a good life, yeah. We have a sunken storm sewer manhole in the middle of the ADA parking space, and the ADA spaces aren't currently compliant. But aside from that, I worked with an engineer from Rookwood Milky, who donated his services to repair the plans and specs for this, and we have an engineer's estimated cost of approximately eighty-six thousand dollars to take the pavement down to the sub-bays, which is the gravel, and some of the gravel might be removed for patching in certain areas where it's heavily alligator, that's the cracking, you see, that's typically a sign that the gravel underneath the asphalt has, has gotten bad, so we've allocated some funds to do some of the replacements there. And the idea would be that the work would be done over a weekend, because, you know, with the village hall here, trying to do half a lot of time with people coming and going is probably not as safe as some other alternatives, so what I proposed with the specs is that the work is to be done on one weekend, getting no sooner than four o'clock on a Friday, and ending before seven AM on Monday. I talked to some contractors for their take on that, and they all said it was fairly doable with the size of this, especially, you know, we would post signs in our parking lot for the regular users, if a lot would be closed on the weekend, blah, 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 and we'd have some barricades up for that weekend, too, so if people were driving in, you know, we could give them, you know, go to the Kelsey Road lot if they're trying to access the trails. So, with that, what I'm proposing is that we use the Whining Key Trust money for this rather than the general fund, that's money for maintenance of our village hall and grounds that the Whining Keys generously left us, and that we go forward with this this spring.
Questions for the administrator? All over due. Let's do these in block, fifteen B, Friar Farm Park Invasive Control. Administrator Dalton-Lang?
Yeah, so, you may have noticed this last year, a lot of, a lot more invasive species coming up, there's fragmites and other invasives along our Friar Farm Park. So, when we developed the Friar Farm Park in twenty thirteen, it included a restoration plan, which detailed how the areas were to be restored with metal curvices, like what's on the sled hill and so forth, and the wetlands that are toward the bottom of that hill, and unfortunately, the, the follow-up maintenance that you need to establish these things wasn't done. And so, what we have now is highly invasive teasel-taking root, and that takes a couple of years to kill off, because once you can see it, it's already been there for a couple of years, it's the first year you don't even see it. Other communities are fighting this, but I can tell you, if, if we don't take care of it, the whole field will be teasel, the whole Kelsey Road corridor will be teasel. So, Trillion Landscape, Native Landscape, they performed our services for the village, most notably our, our restored basin out here, the village hall, the bioswale that's out there with the, the native plants, we also had them do the Tallgrass Restoration Project, so I, this is, first, I included a cost proposal, and what I'm talking about right now is just the first year where they worked the thirteen thousand dollars to do the, the herbicide maintenance needed, it would include a burn, the map I gave you shows the area of the burn, and, or if I circled it around there, and it would be important that, that the burn would happen this spring, and when I say this spring, it's typically when the, the weather conditions will permit, so after the snow melts, Lake County Forest was their district up at the Marina, they did a burn last month, you know, if they have dry enough conditions without snow, they, you can do burns now as well. So, this, this is the first part of an intensive three-year maintenance plan, as you can see by the cost proposal now, it goes down a little bit every year for the first three years, and then after that, it would be about half of that, about four thousand a year to maintain, to do the burns as necessary and spot herbicide and stuff, so this is the least invasive way to bring back what was planted out there.
Yeah, once those things take hold, they never want to let go. Are there questions for the administrator on fifteen B about the weed control? Okay, they're being met, Chair would like a motion to block to approve Agenda items fifteen A and B. A, motion to authorize the village administrator to invite bids for the village hall parking lot resurfacing project, and B, motion to approve an agreement with Trillion Native Landscapes Incorporated in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars, to authorize the village administrator to execute the necessary documents, where the motion blocks, so moved, by Trustee Mitchell, thank you, by Trustee Thompson, thank you, both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Hi.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item sixteen, this is the second time in the agenda for the public to adjust the board on non-agenda items, seeing none. We do have a need for a closed session, so I want to let my colleagues know we should be here for just a bit longer. With that, Chair would like a motion that a portion of the, that a meeting, a portion of the meeting be closed to the public effective immediately for the purposes of discussing real estate acquisition or potential litigation. So moved. By Trustee Thompson.
Second.
By Trustee Schaller, thank you, both.
Potential litigation, we wouldn't mean litigation, which is probable, or?
Thank you, that's, that's the statute, remember, thank you. Moved by Trustee Mitchell, or was it Thompson?
Thompson.
Thompson, thank you, okay, then Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rippey.
Hi.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. We will take a very brief recess, though, before we call the roll into closed session.